By the time the sun broke pale and cold over the salt marshes of Massachusetts in the winter of nineteen eighteen, somewhere north of Boston where the tidal creeks cut narrow and black through frozen cord grass and the wind came sharp and salt-heavy off the Atlantic, the shoemaker's black-and-tan terrier named Nell had already made the crossing three times that week without trouble. She was small, wiry, built low to the ground, steady as a church clock, the kind of dog you could trust with an errand in weather that kept most animals by the fire. Her coat was coarse and dark, her ears sharp and alert, and around her neck she wore a stitched leather collar, brown, hand-worked, with a brass bell tag that chimed softly when she trotted across the frozen ground. The shoemaker, a man named Horace Dyer, lived in a narrow clapboard house at the eastern edge of the village, where the paved road gave way to dirt paths and marsh trails and the smell of brine and rotting eelgrass mixed with coal smoke from the kitchen stoves. He was a quiet man, methodical, known for steady work and fair prices. He sent Nell across the footbridge most mornings just after dawn to carry a knotted rag to the netmender's shack on the far side of the salt creek. The netmender, a widow named Mrs. Caulfield, lived alone in a weathered shack with a tin chimney and a single window facing the water. She would tie a reply or a spool of thread or a folded scrap of paper in the rag, and send Nell back within the hour, sometimes with a biscuit tucked in the knot. It was routine, it was safe. It was Massachusetts in a hard winter, with ice in the wells and frost on the inside of windows, and routines like this kept people sane when the cold bit deep and the war overseas made everything else uncertain and strange. The dog knew the route by heart; she had walked it since she was a pup, through rain and snow and fog so thick you couldn't see your own boots. No one in the village worried about Nell crossing that bridge alone. The salt creek itself was tidal, shallow in the winter months, lined with eelgrass that waved slow and dark under the brine even when the surface froze at the edges, and the mud beneath turned hard as stone. The footbridge was old, older than most of the houses in the village though no one remembered exactly when it had been built. It was made of twelve weathered planks nailed across two thick beams sunk deep into the creek banks, with a single handrail on the north side that had been painted white once, years ago, and was now chipped and gray and splintered in places. The span was no more than thirty feet from bank to bank, just wide enough for a man to cross without feeling crowded, just narrow enough that you noticed the water below if you looked down. Men in the village had crossed it a thousand times in fog and rain, in the pitch-dark of early mornings before the fishing boats left. Dogs crossed it, children crossed it on their way to the schoolhouse when the weather was decent. It was nothing special, it was just a bridge, the kind of structure that blends into the landscape until something makes you see it differently. On the afternoon of January nineteenth, nineteen eighteen, a Saturday, just as the neap tide pulled low and exposed the black mud and tangled roots below, and the winter light began to fail early and gray, Nell trotted out onto the bridge with the knotted rag clenched gently in her teeth. Horace Dyer watched her from his shop window, wiping the condensation from the glass with the heel of his hand. He saw the brass bell tag catch the last slant of cold daylight. He saw her small black body step carefully onto boards that were slick with rime frost, her gait sure and her tail low against the wind that came steady off the water. She moved with the confidence of a creature that had done this a hundred times before. Then Horace turned back to his workbench and the half-finished boot in his hands. That was the last time anyone saw Nell walk across that bridge alive. When Mrs. Caulfield came to the shop an hour later, her wool shawl pulled tight around her shoulders and her face drawn and pale in the gaslight, she said Nell never arrived. She had been waiting by the window. She had heard no bell. She had seen nothing on the path. Horace felt something cold and unfamiliar settle in his chest. He put down his tools, pulled on his coat, and walked to the bridge in the failing dusk with a tin lantern in one hand. He called the dog's name into the wind, his voice thin and swallowed by the open marsh. The boards of the bridge were glazed white with frost, smooth and unbroken in the lantern light. There were no paw prints, no claw marks, no scuff or scrape or sign that anything living had crossed in the last hour. But halfway across the bridge, laid neat and deliberate on the frost-white north railing as if someone had placed it there with great care, was Nell's stitched leather collar. The brass bell tag was still attached, gleaming dully in the weak light, and when Horace picked it up with shaking hands, the leather was warm, not cold, not frozen, but warm, as warm as if the dog had only just slipped free of it moments before. Warm enough that he could feel it through his gloves, warm as living skin. The collar smelled faintly of her, of wet fur and wood smoke, and the sharp salt air of the marsh. He stood there alone in the cold with the wind pulling at his coat, holding the collar in both hands and felt the warmth drain slowly, reluctantly, into the frozen air around him. Below the bridge, ten feet down through the gap in the planks, the eelgrass waved slow and hypnotic in the dark tidal water. There was no broken ice, there was no body, no fur, no sign of struggle, there was no splash, no sound, no disturbance at all in the slick black surface of the creek. No one in the village that evening, when Horace went door-to-door with the lantern and the warm collar and a rising panic in his voice, had heard anything unusual, just the wind off the marsh, steady and cold, just the creek of the bridge planks when the tide shifted beneath them, and the faint sound of a bell, soft, distant, impossibly clear, chiming once or twice in the still air, a sound that a few people swore they heard long after Nell should have been home and safe by the fire. What came next is what people around the salt marshes north of Boston in Massachusetts still speak of carefully, and only when someone new to the area asks why the old footbridge near the tidal creek was torn down in the spring of nineteen eighteen, and why no one, not the town council or the fishermen or even the children looking for adventure, ever tried to rebuild it. That night after Horace brought the warm collar home and laid it on his kitchen table, where it finally, slowly, cooled to the temperature of the room, a light was seen moving along the marsh path. A lantern, swinging low and steady at hip height, as if someone were walking the narrow trail in the dark toward the bridge with sure and deliberate steps. But no one in the village was out. The constable, a man named Soames who lived two houses down from the white church at the center of town, checked every door on the main street and the lane that ran toward the marsh. Every family was inside, shutters closed against the cold, fires banked, children in bed. Every lantern in the village was accounted for. And yet the light moved, visible from three different windows swinging in a steady rhythm for nearly twenty minutes before it vanished somewhere near the bridge where the path met the first plank. At dawn, when Horace and three other men, two fishermen with grim faces and the constable carrying a rifle he did not load, returned to search the bridge and the banks in the cold blue morning light, they found something that made all four of them stop talking at once and stand very still in the frost. There were tiny claw marks on the white planks of the bridge, four-footed marks, small and deliberate and unmistakable, the kind a terrier would leave when walking carefully across slick wood, marks that had not been there the night before when Horace searched with the lantern, marks that looked as though something small and living had walked the bridge again in the hours after midnight. After the frost had settled a second time in the deepest cold before dawn, the marks led from the eastern bank across the first six planks, then stopped abruptly halfway across the span. Beneath them, the wood was bone-dry, the marsh below was still and silent, the tide had not risen. There were no other tracks leading to or from the marks. And in the clear morning air, standing on that bridge with his breath fogging white and his hands numb inside his gloves, Horace Dyer heard the brass bell tag chime once, soft and clear, from inside his coat pocket where he had placed the collar the night before. He had not moved, his hands were pressed flat against the cold railing. The bell chimed once, and then was silent. By the middle of that week after three full days of questions and searching and sleepless nights, the village had pieced together a timeline of January nineteenth that made no sense no matter how many times they checked the details. On that Saturday afternoon, at ten minutes past four by the church clock, the grocer's wife, a woman known for her sharp eyes and attention to the street, had seen Nell trot past the store window heading east toward the marsh path, the knotted rag clenched in her mouth and her brass bell chiming clear and steady in the cold air. At twenty past four, Mrs. Caulfield, sitting by her window across the salt creek with a wool shawl over her lap and a cup of tea going cold in her hands, had looked toward the bridge at the sound of wind gusting hard, and had seen nothing on the planks or the path beyond. No dog, no movement, no sign of life at all. At half past four, Horace Dyer had watched from his shop window, wiping condensation from the glass with his hand, as Nell stepped onto the bridge, her small, dark body moving with the steady confidence of long habit. And at quarter to five, when Mrs. Caulfield finally walked to the bridge herself to see why the dog had not arrived, and why she heard no bell, the stitched leather collar was already lying on the frost-white north railing, still warm enough to feel through her gloves, and Nell was gone. Fifteen minutes, that was all the window they had. Though fifteen minutes on a Saturday afternoon in January, on a bridge no longer than a freight wagon, over water shallow enough at low tide to see the mud and stones at the bottom, and a small dog weighing no more than twenty pounds had vanished as completely as if the earth had opened beneath her and swallowed her whole without sound. The constable, a methodical man who kept his records in neat script, wrote it all down in his ledger that night by lamplight, and when he read it back to himself in the silence of his kitchen, he found no gap in the sequence, no missing piece that would allow for a living animal to disappear. "She stepped on," one of the fishermen said quietly in the church on Sunday morning, his voice low and his hands twisting his cap. But she never stepped off. The search began in earnest that same Sunday at first light, when the sky was gray and the frost lay thick on every surface. Horace Dyer, the constable, four fishermen with grim weathered faces, the minister in his long black coat, and a dozen other men from the village and the farms to the west gathered at the eastern bank of the salt creek, with tin lanterns, coiled ropes, and heavy iron grappling hooks wrapped in burlap. The morning was clear and bitterly cold, the kind of cold that made your lungs ache and your eyes water and turned your breath to thick white fog. They began with the bridge itself, walking it plank by plank, testing each board for rot or looseness or any sign of structural failure that might explain a collapse. They found nothing. The wood was solid, old but sound, nailed tight to the thick beams below with iron nails driven deep. They got down on their hands and knees in the frost and inspected the gaps between the planks, looking for any opening that might allow even a small animal to slip through into the water below. The gaps were narrow, barely wide enough to slide a hand through, far too narrow for a dog. They dragged heavy iron hooks through the shallow water beneath the span, pulling up tangles of cold eelgrass and black mud that smelled of salt and rot, and the rusted remains of an old anchor chain, but no body, no fur, no scrap of cloth or leather, no sign at all of the dog. They walked the banks on both sides of the creek slowly, moving in a line shoulder to shoulder, eyes fixed on the frozen mud and the tangle of cord grass, and the thin sheets of ice that clung to the exposed roots where the tide had pulled back. They tied strips of white cloth torn from old sheets to the fence posts that marked the edges of the marsh paths, so they would know exactly where they had already searched and would not waste time covering the same ground twice. The dogs they brought with them, two hounds, experienced and steady, belonging to one of the fishermen who used them for tracking deer in the hills west of the village, pulled eagerly toward the bridge at first, noses pressed low to the cold ground, tails high and quivering with interest. And then, halfway across the span, exactly where the paw print would be found the next day, both dogs stopped dead, as if they had run into an invisible wall. They sat down hard on the cold planks, ears flat against their skulls, and began to whine, a high, thin, miserable sound that carried across the open marsh and made the hair on the back of every man's neck stand up. When the fishermen tried to pull them forward with the leash, they dug their claws into the wood and refused to move, their bodies trembling. When he tried to drag them, speaking in the calm voice they had always obeyed, they began to howl, a sound so raw and desperate and unlike anything he had ever heard from them, that the minister, standing on the eastern bank with his hands folded, turned away and would not look at the bridge again that day. After that no one brought dogs to the search, no one even suggested it. The hounds were taken home, and would not eat for two days. On Monday the search widened and deepened. Men walked the marsh in a careful grid pattern, calling Nell's name into the wind until their voices were hoarse, checking every ditch and frozen hollow and shallow pool for any sign of the animal. Women from the village brought hot coffee and dented tin thermoses and thick slices of bread, wrapped in clean cloth, to the search parties in the late morning, and stood on the porches of their houses with shawls pulled tight, watching the men move slowly across the distant marsh like dark shapes in the gray winter light. Children were kept inside or sent to school early, with strict warnings not to go near the creek, not to wander toward the bridge, not to ask too many questions. By Monday afternoon something new had appeared that stopped the search cold for nearly an hour. One of the white cloth strips that had been tied to a fence post near the eastern bank of the creek, a strip tied there by one of the fishermen himself on Sunday morning, tied with a double knot, was gone. The post was still standing upright, the fence wire was intact and pulled taut, but the strip of cloth was missing, and in its place tied to the same post with the same kind of overhand knot, was a fresh strip of white cloth, clean, unmarked, without a single stain of mud or frost or the gray color that comes from handling. No one in the search party admitted to replacing it. No one had been near that section of the grid since the evening before, and the constable himself had walked the path at dawn to check the markers and had seen the original strip still in place. The men stood in a tight circle around the post and stared at the new cloth in silence, their breath fogging in the cold air. One of them, a man named Hackett who worked the oyster beds in warmer months and had a reputation for steady nerves, finally reached out and touched the cloth with two fingers. Still damp, he said quietly, his voice barely audible over the wind, like it was tide this morning, fresh tide. But no one had been out that early. The search parties did not gather until well after sunrise, and every man could account for his movements. The constable untied the cloth with slow fingers, folded it into a small square, and put it in his coat pocket without a word. No one spoke about it again that day, but that night, in the small homes scattered around the village, people began to lock their doors earlier than usual, and pull their curtains tight, and keep their children close. That same Monday afternoon, just as the winter light began to fail and the temperature dropped sharply and the men prepared to leave the marsh for the night, someone heard a sound that froze them all in place. A bell, soft, distant, but unmistakable and clear. It chimed twice in quick succession, a familiar sound, the sound of a brass tag swinging on a leather collar, the sound Nell's bell had made when she trotted across frozen ground. The sound came from the west, from somewhere near the bridge. Every man stopped walking, every man turned toward the sound, their faces tight and pale in the fading light. The marsh was utterly silent except for the wind moving through the cord grass and the faint creek of ice forming at the edges of the creek. The constable, his jaw set and his rifle held loose in one hand, walked back to the bridge with two other men close behind him, their boots crunching on the frost. There was nothing there, no dog, no movement, no sign of anything living. The planks were empty and white with fresh frost, but on the north railing, in the exact spot where Horace had found the warm collar four days before, there was a single small paw print, clear, deliberate, pressed into the thin layer of frost as if something with weight and warmth had stepped there only moments ago. The print had not been there an hour earlier when the men had crossed the bridge to search the western bank. The constable stared at it for a long time, his breath coming slow and visible, his hands cold inside his gloves. Then he looked down through the gap in the planks at the water below. The tide was out, the black mud was exposed, ribbed and glistening, and it was completely empty. No tracks, no marks, no disturbance of any kind. "We're not walking this bridge after dark," he said finally, his voice flat and final. "Not anymore, not any of us." The other men nodded slowly, no one argued, no one asked why. And when they left the marsh that night, they left quickly, walking close together in a tight group, and no one looked back at the bridge or the pale shape of the railing against the darkening sky. By Tuesday the fifth day, a pattern had emerged that no one in Massachusetts wanted to name out loud or acknowledge in any direct way. The search parties were finding things, small things, strange things, impossible things, that had not been there before, and should not exist in any rational world. A second strip of white cloth tied to a post that already had one, both strips clean and damp and knotted identically. A single boot print pressed deep into the soft mud near the western bank, clear and fresh, but facing the wrong direction entirely, as if someone had walked backward from the water toward the bridge without ever turning around. A faint smell of smoke, sharp, chemical, like burning wool or tar, drifting in slow waves across the marsh when no fire was lit anywhere nearby, and no chimney was close enough to carry the scent that far. And twice in the early hours of the morning before the search parties gathered and before most of the village was awake, people walking past the marsh on their way to work or to early church service reported seeing a light near the bridge, a lantern, low and steady, swinging at hip height as if carried by someone walking the narrow path in the dark with sure steps. But when the constable checked, rushing to the site with his coat half-buttoned and his rifle loaded and his heart pounding, the bridge was always empty, the path was always empty, and there were no footprints in the fresh frost, no marks at all in the cold mud to show that anyone living had been there. The older men in the village, the ones who had worked the salt marshes and the fishing boats for thirty or forty years, men whose fathers and grandfathers had been born in Massachusetts and worked the same cold waters, began to speak in low voices about other disappearances, older ones, events that had happened before most of the current generation was born. "A child," they said, "a girl no more than six years old, who had wandered too close to the tidal creek in the winter of eighteen eighty-seven and was never found," despite a search that lasted two full weeks and involved men from three neighboring towns. A fisherman in the spring of nineteen oh two who had tied his small boat to the pilings near the bridge one calm evening, and was gone by morning, his boat still tied securely and rocking gently, his coat still folded neatly on the wooden seat, his tobacco pipe still resting in the tin ashtray as if he had just stepped away for a moment. The older men said these things carefully, when the younger ones were not close enough to overhear, and they said them in a way that made it clear they were not offering theories or looking for explanations. They were offering warnings, the kind passed down quietly from one generation to the next. "People in Massachusetts don't ask too many questions about some places," one of them said quietly to Horace Dyer on Tuesday night, standing outside the church after the evening meeting, his voice low and his eyes on the dark shape of the marsh in the distance. "And that bridge has always been one of them, always." On Wednesday morning the sixth day, Horace Dyer walked to the bridge alone before dawn, against the strong advice of the constable and the minister and his own better judgment. He carried the stitched leather collar wrapped carefully in a clean handkerchief in his coat pocket, and he carried a small tin lantern in his left hand. The flame turned low. The sky was still dark, the stars hard and bright and cold overhead. He stood on the eastern bank and looked at the empty span in the blue light that comes just before sunrise and tried to understand what had happened to the dog he had raised from a pup, the dog that had crossed that bridge a hundred times without fear. The planks were white with frost that glittered faintly in the lantern light. The railing was empty, the water below was black and perfectly still, reflecting nothing. And as he stood there, his breath fogging thick and his heart beating slow and hard in his chest, the brass bell tag in his pocket, the tag he had not touched since wrapping the collar the night before, the tag that hung silent on the leather folded in the wool lining of his coat, chimed once, soft and clear and impossible in the freezing air. Horace pulled the collar out with hands that shook badly. The stitched leather was warm again, not cold, not frozen, warm, as warm as if it had been resting for hours against living skin, as if the dog were still wearing it somewhere close by, just out of sight. He held it in both hands and felt the warmth spread slowly into his cold palms, and he knew with a certainty that made his chest tighten and his throat close, that whatever had taken Nell from that bridge on a cold Saturday afternoon in January was still there, still present, still waiting on those planks. Still walking in the hours when no one was watching and no lanterns were lit and the village slept behind locked doors. He stood there for a long time, holding the warm collar and staring at the empty bridge and the dark water below, and then he turned slowly and walked back toward the village without looking behind him even once. He told the constable later that morning that he was done searching. He told the minister that afternoon that he would not go back to the marsh, not for any reason. And by the end of that week on Saturday, exactly seven days after Nell vanished, the footbridge over the salt creek was officially condemned by the village council, and men with hammers and crowbars began pulling up the frost-white planks one by one and stacking them on the bank. The work of dismantling the bridge took three days, and not one of those days passed without something that made the men stop and look at each other in silence. On the first morning when they arrived with their tools and began prying up the planks, they found the paw print still visible on the north railing, the same print the constable had seen on Monday afternoon. But the frost had melted and returned twice since then, and the print should have been gone. It was not. It was clear and pressed deep, as if something had stepped there in the night while the wood was wet and the impression had frozen solid. One of the men tried to wipe it away with his glove. The mark did not smudge, he scraped at it with the edge of a chisel. The wood beneath was smooth and unmarked, but the print remained visible, like a stain that had soaked in too deep to remove. They left that section of railing for last, and when they finally pulled it free and stacked it with the other boards, three of the men swore they heard a faint chime, soft, distant, like a brass bell ringing once from somewhere across the marsh. But there was no wind that day, and no one else was near. By the second day the bridge was half-gone, the eastern bank was clear, the pilings exposed, the water below dark and sluggish with the neap tide. The men worked quickly and spoke little. They did not stop for long breaks, they did not joke or smoke or lean on their tools the way they normally would. There was a tension in the air, a feeling that if they did not finish soon, something would happen that none of them wanted to name. In the afternoon, one of the younger men, a carpenter's apprentice named Dalton no more than nineteen years old, was stacking planks on the western bank when he found something wedged between two boards. It was a strip of white cloth, knotted tight, the same kind they had used to mark the fence post during the search. But this strip was different. It was tied in a figure-eight knot, a knot that none of them had used, a knot that looked deliberate and practiced. And when Dalton pulled it free and held it up, the cloth was warm, not damp, not cold from lying in the stack. Warm, as if it had just come off someone's body. He dropped it immediately and stepped back, his face pale. The foreman picked it up with the tip of a hammer and examined it without touching it with his hands. "Burn it," he said quietly. They did that evening, in a fire behind the church. The cloth burned slow and reluctant, with a smell that was not quite smoke and not quite anything else, and no one stayed to watch it finish. The search for Nell had stopped officially after the bridge was condemned, but people still talked. In the homes and the shops and the church in low voices when children were not listening, they talked about what had happened and what it might mean. Some said Horace had enemies, men who resented his work or his reputation, and that someone had taken the dog to hurt him. Others said the bridge had always been unstable, that the dog had slipped through a gap or fallen into the water and been carried away by the current, and that everything else, the warm collar, the paw print, the bell sound, the cloth strips, the lantern light, was coincidence or imagination or the result of fear feeding on itself in a small community. But there were others, older voices who said nothing in public and everything in private, who said that the marsh had always taken things and that the bridge was the threshold where it reached out. They said the girl in eighteen eighty-seven had heard something call her name. They said the fisherman in nineteen oh two had tied his boat and stepped onto the bridge and simply kept walking, even though there was nowhere to walk to, even though the span ended in open air above black water. They said these things carefully, as if speaking too clearly might draw attention, might make something that was already close come closer still. By the time the third day of work arrived, the bridge was nearly gone. Only a few planks remained on the western side, and the men were eager to finish and leave the site for good. But that morning, when they returned to the marsh, they found something that stopped them cold. On the eastern bank where the stack of pulled planks had been left overnight, the boards had been moved, not scattered, not knocked over by wind or animals, moved, rearranged. The planks were now laid out in a line, end to end, stretching from the bank toward the water as if someone had been building a new bridge in the dark. The line was straight, the boards were evenly spaced, and at the end of the line, balanced carefully on the last plank, was Nell's brass bell tag. Just the tag, not the collar, not the stitched leather, just the small brass circle with the dog's name engraved on one side, resting on the wood as if it had been placed there with great care. The constable, who had come that morning to oversee the final work, stared at it for a long time without moving. Then he walked forward slowly, picked up the tag with two fingers, and held it up to the light. It was warm, warm enough that he could feel it through his gloves. He wrapped it in his handkerchief, put it in his coat pocket, and told the men to finish the job and leave nothing behind. They worked in silence that day, pulling the last planks, filling in the holes where the pilings had stood, scattering dirt and stones over the site until it looked as though no bridge had ever been there. By late afternoon the work was done, the marsh was empty. The path was blocked with saw The path was blocked with sawhorses and a painted sign that read, "Condemned, no crossing." The men gathered their tools and walked back toward the village in a tight group, and not one of them looked back at the creek or the place where the bridge had stood. Horace Dyer, who had not been to the marsh since Wednesday morning, stayed home that day and every day after. He kept the leather collar in a wooden box in his shop, wrapped in the same handkerchief he had carried it in, and he did not open the box again. The constable kept the brass bell tag in his desk drawer at home, and he did not tell his wife or his children where it had come from or why he kept it. And in the weeks that followed, as winter deepened and the salt creek froze solid at the edges, and the marsh grass turned brown and brittle under the cold, people in Massachusetts began to change the way they moved through their own landscape. No one walked the marsh path after dark anymore, not even with lanterns, not even in groups. Fishermen who used to moor their boats near the old pilings moved them farther south, to the docks closer to town. Children were told, in language that left no room for questions, that the eastern marsh was off limits entirely, day or night, winter or summer. Parents did not explain why. They did not need to. The children heard the tone, saw the faces, and obeyed. The older generation, the ones who remembered the girl in eighteen eighty-seven and the fisherman in nineteen oh two, began to speak more openly about the rules that had always existed in that part of Massachusetts, rules that had been forgotten or ignored, and that were now being remembered and reinforced. "You did not go near the tidal creek alone. You did not answer if you heard your name called from the marsh, when no one else was with you. You did not pick up anything you found on the path that did not belong to you. And you did not, under any circumstances, try to rebuild or replace the bridge that had been torn down. These rules were not written, they were not posted, they were passed quietly from household to household, from old hands to young, and they were followed without question." In the spring of nineteen eighteen, when the weather warmed and the eel grass turned green again, and the tides rose higher with the new moon, Mrs. Caulfield left the village entirely. She moved to Boston to a boarding house near the harbor, and she did not return. Horace Dyer continued his work as a shoemaker, but he was quieter after that winter, more withdrawn, and he never owned another dog. The constable served for another twelve years before retiring, and in all that time he never wrote a final report on the disappearance of Nell. The case remained open in his ledger, a single page of careful notes with no conclusion, no theory, no closing statement. And in the decades that followed, as the village grew and changed and new families moved in and old families moved away, the story of the black and tan terrier who vanished on a frozen bridge became part of the local fabric, a story told in kitchens and on porches, a story that explained why certain paths were avoided and certain places were left alone. But there were details that people did not share widely, details that stayed within families or were whispered only to those who needed to know. The brass bell tag that the constable had found on the last morning of the bridge work disappeared from his desk drawer in the summer of nineteen nineteen. He had checked it the night before and it was there, wrapped in the handkerchief, resting in the back corner of the drawer. In the morning it was gone. The drawer was still locked. The house had been empty all night. No one had broken in. The tag was simply gone and he never found it again. And three years later, in the winter of nineteen twenty-one, a woman walking past the marsh early one morning, reported seeing a small dark shape on the bank where the eastern end of the bridge had once stood, a shape that looked like a dog sitting still, facing the water. She called out. The shape did not move. She walked closer and as she did she heard a faint chime, soft and clear like a brass bell ringing once in the cold air. When she reached the spot, there was nothing there, no tracks in the frost, no sign that anything living had been sitting on the frozen ground. But later that day when she told her husband what she had seen, he told her quietly, not to go back to that part of the marsh, not ever. And she did not ask why. People in Massachusetts still talk about Nell, though most of the details have softened with time. They say a dog disappeared on a bridge in the winter of nineteen eighteen, and that the bridge was torn down because something was wrong with it, and that the area around the old site has never felt quite right since. They do not talk about the warm collar or the paw print that would not fade, or the bell that chimed from empty air. They do not talk about the white cloth strips that appeared and disappeared or the lantern light that walked the path when no one was there. Those details stay inside, unspoken, part of the quiet knowledge that binds a community to its landscape. But the rules remain. Even now, more than a hundred years later, people around the salt marshes north of Boston will tell you there are places you do not go alone, and sounds you do not follow, and bridges, even ones that no longer exist, that you do not try to cross after dark. The years passed as they always do, and the village north of Boston grew and changed in ways both visible and invisible. New families arrived. Old families left or died out. The church was repainted, the school expanded. The roads were paved, the fishing industry shifted and adapted to new markets and new methods. But the eastern marsh remained untouched, and the place where the footbridge had once stood remained empty, and the rules that had been established in the winter of nineteen eighteen remained in force, passed down quietly from parents to children, from old workers to new, from one generation to the next, without ever being written down or officially acknowledged. By the nineteen thirties, most of the people who had been alive when Nell disappeared were gone or elderly, their memories fading, their voices growing softer. But the story persisted. It changed shape slightly with each telling, the way all oral histories do. But the core remained the same. A dog had crossed a bridge and never arrived. A collar had been found still warm. Something had walked the marsh at night when no one should have been there. And the bridge had been torn down not because it was unsafe in any structural sense, but because it had become unsafe in a way that could not be measured or explained or fixed with hammers and nails. In nineteen forty-seven, the town council discussed building a new footbridge across the Salt Creek. The proposal came from a newcomer, a man who had moved to the area after the war, and who saw the long detour around the marsh as inefficient and unnecessary. He drew up plans. He secured funding. He presented his case at a public meeting in the church, standing at the front with maps and diagrams in a confident voice. The older residents sat in silence and listened. When he finished, one of them, a man in his seventies who had been a child in nineteen eighteen, and who remembered the search parties and the pulled planks and the way his mother had gripped his hand too tightly whenever they walked past the marsh, stood slowly and said, without raising his voice, that the bridge would not be rebuilt, not there, not ever. The newcomer argued. He pointed to the maps, to the cost savings, to the logic of the route. The old man simply shook his head and sat back down. The proposal was voted down by a wide margin, and it was never brought up again. The newcomer left town within a year, frustrated by what he called superstition and backwardness. But the people who stayed knew it was not superstition. It was memory. It was the knowledge that some places, once they have taken something, do not give it back, and that building a bridge over such a place is not an act of construction, but an act of invitation. The physical evidence of what happened in January nineteen eighteen faded over time, but the emotional evidence did not. Horace Dyer kept the leather collar in the wooden box in his shop until he died in nineteen fifty-three, and when his niece cleaned out the shop after his funeral, she found the box and opened it. The collar was inside, wrapped in the same yellowed handkerchief and when she lifted it out it was warm. Not hot, not burning, but warm, distinctly and impossibly warm, as if it had been resting in sunlight or near a fire. But the box had been closed for years, sitting in a cold corner of a shop that had been locked and dark since Horace's death. She wrapped the collar back up, closed the box and buried it in her yard without telling anyone. She did not know why she did that instead of throwing it away. She only knew that it felt like the right thing to do, the safe thing, the thing that would keep whatever was attached to that collar from finding its way back into the world of the living. In the nineteen sixties, a historian from Boston came to the area researching local folklore and heard the story of Nell. He interviewed several elderly residents, took notes, recorded a few conversations on a reel-to-reel tape machine. He was particularly interested in the detail of the warm collar, which he felt had a symbolic resonance, a metaphor for memory and loss that he wanted to explore in his work. He asked if anyone still had the collar or knew where it might be. No one did. He asked if there were any photographs of the dog or the bridge. There were none. He asked if he could visit the site where the bridge had stood. The residents he spoke to discouraged it, but he went anyway, alone, one afternoon in late autumn. He walked the marsh path to the eastern bank of the creek and stood where the bridge had once been and took photographs and made notes. He stayed for perhaps twenty minutes. On his way back to his car he heard a sound behind him, a faint chime, like a small bell ringing twice in quick succession. He turned. There was nothing there, just the marsh grass moving in the wind, and the water reflecting the gray sky. He left quickly and when he returned to Boston he abandoned his research project entirely. He told a colleague later, in a letter that survives in an archive, that there was something about the place that made him feel watched, something that made him feel as though he had interrupted a conversation that was still ongoing, and that he did not want to be part of whatever was being said. By the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties, the story of Nell had become a local legend, known but not widely discussed. The kind of story that surfaces at certain times, around campfires, at Halloween, in the moments when people are feeling brave or nostalgic or curious about the past. Teenagers occasionally dared each other to walk the old marsh path at night, to stand on the bank where the bridge had been and call out for the dog. Most did not follow through. A few did. Of those who did, some reported hearing a faint bell sound or seeing a flicker of light moving across the water. Others reported nothing and laughed it off as a waste of time. But even the ones who laughed did not go back alone, and even the ones who claimed to be unafraid did not stay long after dark. The marsh had a reputation, and reputations, even ones built on events a century old, have a way of shaping behavior in ways that logic cannot. In two thousand and three, a dog went missing near the marsh, not on the site of the old bridge but close, perhaps a quarter mile south near a newer path that had been cleared in the nineteen seventies. The dog was a young retriever, golden and friendly, belonging to a family that had moved to the area only a few years before. The dog had been let out in the evening and did not come back. The family searched. Neighbors helped. Flyers were posted. Days passed. A week passed. And then on the eighth day, the dog's collar was found on the bank of the Salt Creek, not far from where the old bridge had once stood. The collar was lying on a flat stone, placed deliberately, as if set down rather than dropped. And when the owner picked it up, she later told her husband, "It was warm." She did not say this to anyone else. She did not post it online or mention it to the neighbors. She simply took the collar home, and the family moved away six months later without explanation. The dog was never found. People in Massachusetts, particularly those who have lived around the salt marshes north of Boston for more than one generation, still follow the rules without always knowing why. They do not walk the eastern marsh alone after dark. They do not let their dogs off leash near the tidal creeks. They do not answer if they hear something that sounds like their name being called from the water or the grass when no one else is nearby. They teach their children these rules casually, as part of the ordinary knowledge of living in that place, the way you might teach a child not to touch a hot stove or not to swim alone. And when someone new moves to the area and asks why the path around the marsh is so long and indirect, why there is no bridge across the creek even though it would save ten minutes of walking, the answer is usually vague and polite. "It's just the way it's always been," they say, "or, the ground there isn't stable, or, it's protected marshland." They do not say that a dog disappeared there in nineteen eighteen, and that the collar was found warm and that things have been seen and heard there ever since. They do not say that the bridge was torn down not because it was broken, but because it led somewhere that should not be crossed. They do not say these things out loud, because saying them out loud makes them real in a way that silence does not. But the story is still there, beneath the surface woven into the fabric of the place. It is there in the way people pause when they walk past the marsh at dusk, the way their eyes flick toward the water and then away. It is there in the way parents hold their children's hands a little tighter when they pass that section of the path. It is there in the way no one has ever seriously proposed rebuilding the footbridge, despite the inconvenience, despite the logic, despite the decades that have passed. And it is there, most of all, in the small, unspoken understanding, that some places remember what happened to them and that memory in certain landscapes is not passive, it is active. It waits, it reaches, and it does not let go. So here is the question that no one in Massachusetts asks out loud, but that everyone who knows the story carries quietly inside. What really happened on that frost white bridge in January nineteen eighteen? Was it something human, an enemy, a rival? Someone who took the dog to hurt Horace Dyer and then panicked and tried to cover it up with strange details and misdirection? Was it something natural? A structural failure no one saw? A gap in the planks that opened just long enough for a small dog to slip through? A current that carried the body away and everything else just coincidence magnified by fear and grief? Or was it something else, something that does not fit into the categories of human or natural? Something that the older families have always known was there? Something that walks the margins between water and land and waits for the small and the faithful in the routine to cross its threshold? Which version do you believe makes sense? And which version do people around the salt marshes in Massachusetts refuse to say out loud even now, more than a century later? Because saying it might mean acknowledging that the world is stranger and more dangerous than we allow ourselves to admit? Subscribe so you don't miss the next story.